All right, we'll let everyone get settled in and welcome our students and our visitors. I call this meeting to order. My name is Frida Player. I'm the Vice Chair. Rachane Elrod is under the weather, so I am filling in as Chair in her stead. So I call this meeting to order. We have a quorum. Since we have eight members present, we need five members for a quorum. We'll give about another 30 seconds for people to settle in, and I'll ask Ms. Bethany Riddle-Johnson to give the pledge. You'll come to the podium, yeah? I'm sorry, it's Dr. Riddle-Johnson. I wasn't aware. My apologies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as provided. There's been a second. It's been moved by Ms. Bugs, seconded by Dr. Nabat and Kenny. We will move on to awards and recognitions. Oh, sorry. All in favor of adopting the agenda, raise your hand. All right, that's eight to zero. Now we move on to awards and recognitions. Dr. Battle?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair, Player, and Board Members. Tonight, we have the privilege of honoring some of our top students, student athletes, coaches, and longtime employees, so let's jump right in. For the first time this year, MNPS is recognizing the middle school with the best all-around athletic performance over the course of the school year. And I'm excited to announce that the inaugural MNPS All-Sports Award goes to who? Meg's Magnet School. Let's give them a round of applause. So this award is based on how our middle school teams perform in our Middle School City Championship in each sport in the fall, winter, and spring. Schools are awarded four points for first place, three points for second place, two points for third place, and one point for fourth place. Meg's many highlights for the 22-23 school year include finishing first in the city in both boys' and girls' cross-country. They were also second in volleyball, second in girls' soccer, second in girls' track, and third in boys' track. So I think that deserves another round of applause. So at this time, I'd like for Meg's Executive Principal, Dr. Scott Underwood, and any of his coaches and student athletes who are here tonight, any staff, as well as Roosevelt Sanders, our Director of Middle School Athletics, to come join us up front to celebrate you and for a photo. Come on up. Look at that big old trophy.
I laughed because I have two middle school kids, one of whom has won trophies.
Congratulations again. This trophy in honor of the inaugural Middle School Championship, it will be rotated, will stay at your school for one year. For you to do as you please, please return it. But we'll be sure as we name next year's winner, if it's not you, your name will be included on the side of it. That will go as the trophy rotates, but this will be yours to keep at your school, in your office, to display how you do it. So congratulations to you, your team, and here is...
All right, congratulations again to everyone from Meg's on setting the pace by winning this great new award. That's pretty cool. Pretty cool. All right, so tonight, we're also eager to tell you about a group of extremely impressive student leaders in our high schools. These are the Academies of Nashville Students of the Year. Each of these 12 students, that's one from each of our 12 zone high schools, has gone above and beyond in striving for excellence and representing our schools and the academies. They have excelled academically in a wide variety of extracurricular activities. They have been great ambassadors for their schools and members of my director's student cabinet. They have served their schools and the community well. Before I introduce these student leaders, I want to thank their principals, their academy coaches, their teachers, their parents, and other caregivers, the business partners who work with academies, and everyone else who has played a role in their lives, their high school careers, and their success. Thank you as well to Dan Phillips. Dan, give us a wave. Our new Director of the Academies of Nashville. So again, Dan will be leading our Academies of Nashville on career and technical education for MNPS, and thank you to him and everyone on his team. And thank you to Deloitte and Pencil for sponsoring our Student of the Year program again this year and giving each of these students some supplies to help them start the next chapter of their lives after graduation. So let's hear about our Academies of Nashville Students of the Year. Students, please come up to the podium when I call your name, and then we'll take a group photo at the end. From Antioch High School, we have Miriam Manasa, who has taken full advantage of the dual enrollment opportunities at Antioch. She founded the school's first Beta Club and is graduating next week at the age of 16. Every student known. From Kane Ridge High School, we have Catherine Gallin Hernandez, who will continue to work part-time for the MNPS Office of English Learners while going to college to pursue a career in graphic design. They're just so impressive. All right, from Glencliff High School, it's Sarah Zeladon, who has been the school's Head Ambassador for two years and will attend Belmont University on a full-ride Bell Tower Scholarship and study nursing. The excellent Student of the Year from Hillsborough High School is Zachariah Brown, who will attend Hampton University and plans... They didn't even let me finish. He will be attending Hampton University and plans to study the natural world using the skills he developed in the audiovisual production pathway at Hillsborough. From Hillwood High School, we have Amira Woolday, who has been a member of the Mayor's Youth Council and plans to attend a four-year university to major in Business and Administration and minor in International Business. From Hunter's Lane High School, it's Jacob Rutherford, who will attend Lipscomb University on a full-ride Lipscomb Scholarship to study secondary education. Jacob will have a concentration in English as he prepares to become an English teacher in Metro Nashville Public Schools. I added that. From Maplewood High School, the Academies of Nashville Student of the Year is Elizabeth Castilio, who is the Student Government Association President at Maplewood and will attend Middle Tennessee State University to study nursing. All right, up next, we have from McGavick High School, Jada Robertson, who will attend Belmont University to major in Legal Studies and minor in Social Work with the goal of becoming a family attorney. Come on up, Jada. From John Overton High School, it's Angela Nwuzi, who plans to become a nurse practitioner, physician's assistant, and has already volunteered more than 400 hours with a home healthcare From Pearl Cone High School, the Student of the Year is Jerome Knight, an audio production and recording team leader at Pearl Cone, who plans to attend Austin Peay State University. Well, this is cool, because from Stratford STEM Magnet High School, we have Gregory Morrow. Gregory is a leader of Stratford's Criminal Justice Cadet Corps, who will also attend Austin Peay State University. And from Whites Creek High School, it's Henrise Todd, who has been actively involved in peer mentoring Future Farmers of America football and soccer. Congratulations Henri. All right, so let's give it up for all the Academies of Nashville Students of the Year. Students, we are so proud of all of you and the way you've represented your schools, the academies of Nashville, and the entire district. And we look forward to following your accomplishments as you graduate and head on to college and careers. So don't y'all move, because we're coming to you to take a quick photo. Congratulations again. Y'all want to stand? All right, so let's get a quick picture with the Students of the Year and the Board, and then I would like to invite principals and any other school staff or family members who are here to jump in the second picture as well. All right, exciting. Always exciting to celebrate our Academies of Nashville Students of the Year. So good to see everyone. I also want to give a quick shout-out to all of our MNPS teachers. I think they deserve a round of applause. As we know, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we appreciate all of our teachers so much for everything that you do every day for our students. You are the rock that our schools are built on, and we are so grateful for your hard work, your dedication, your commitment to making sure every student is known. Not only are they known, that they're supported, that they're cared for, and on a path to success. Thank you, thank you, thank you to all of our teachers across the district. Also, just one shout-out to Pencil and all the great partners who support Pencil for a great teacher appreciation event this Saturday at Pearl Cone High School. What a great turnout, what a fun time to be together and allowing us to celebrate your greatness. So again, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our MNPS teachers. Finally, I want to say a quick word about this year's Employee Service Award winners. We'll have a separate celebration to recognize each of them individually next week, but I wanted to make sure the entire Board, as well as the rest of our audience tonight, also hears about these incredible employees. These are people who have spent most, if not all, of their careers with us here in MNPS. They have reached some pretty impressive milestones this year with Metro Nashville Public Schools. Thirty years, forty years, and yes, even fifty years with the district. I think we should clap for that, too. So these are teachers, principals, assistant principals, school counselors, bus drivers, mechanics, nutrition service workers, speech therapists, attendance clerks, and more. We are so fortunate to work with these team MNPS members, who have devoted their professional lives to serving our students, our families, our communities, our schools. They have made countless lives better with the work they've done each day. So I just want to say a big thank you to all of these star employees for everything you do, and I look forward to spending more time with you next week. And with that, Vice Chair, I will turn it back over to you to move us through our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And since no one has requested to appear upon the Board for public participation, we'll move on to governance issues. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as Frankie.
Second. Dr. Gentry approved the agenda, and Dr. Nabat and Kenny seconded the agenda. All in favor? All right, it passes eight to zero. All right, we move on to committee reports. We did have a Budget and Finance Committee from about 4:15 to 4:05 o'clock. We approved the first draft of our budget, which is $1.25 million with some change. And we'd like to thank Mayor Cooper for his historic investment of a new $100 million for Metro Schools, which is the first time that we have had that in Metro government and Metro schools, to have that historic amount of literally nine figures. Okay, so that's me being a happy Budget Chair of the historic amount that has been really unprecedented. So we'd like to thank the Mayor's Office for that. Now we will go on to the council. Metro Council will have a budget hearing in front of them, I think in the last week of March. I mean, March, ooh, May. And then council will approve the budget, and then we'll come back and approve the final allocation. So that is the budget report. We'll move on to announcements. Okay, we'll start with District One. Dr. Gentry?
Hi, y'all. So I just want to share just two fascinating and super exciting things that happened last week. I can't remember what day of the week it was, but on one of those days, Maplewood Academy of the Automotive with TJ Williams was invited to Bridgestone Towers downtown Nashville. Three of the students received top awards from their class, which included a fully stocked toolbox, like a big thing, on wheels and stuff. I didn't know that when you worked as a mechanic, like at a Firestone, you had to bring your own tools. Had no idea. And so now they are really, pretty prepared to roll that thing in, and it's fully stocked. I have a toolbox as well, but it's filled with hair products and makeup. I do. It's a big toolbox. It's in my house. Anyhow, so just a super shout-out. There was not enough kudos that could be given to TJ, the leadership team at Bridgestone, super excited, and it was during that presentation that they extended their partnership by three years with Maplewood. So really excited about that. It continues to be the only program of its kind in the country, and so shout-out for that. And there was also a student spotlighted and graduated in 2012. His name is Hosea, so I couldn't capture his last name, but he was actually the speaker in encouraging other students to continue the program. And then on, I think it was Saturday, we had Dan Phillips at Pearl Cone for Discover MNPS, sponsored by Pencil, The Chamber, and Alignment Nashville. There was also a panel of students who are a part of various academies. One was the Production Academy, the other in Health Sciences, and the other was the Cosmetology Care Care something. She braids hair, though. I'll tell you that right now. And makes really good money, braiding hair. So they just talked about, again, thanking MNPS for the support for the academies, thanking the business partners, had a few asks that we can talk about later. But one thing I did walk away from that experience with was the pride that those students have in their school, in the opportunities that being a part of MNPS has afforded them. All of them are looking forward to college careers, but understanding that they're leaving that high school experience with skills that will allow them to continue to make money and pay for those ancillary items that continue to prop up. To me, as a parent, I'm letting you know that that extra $500 she's going to get from braiding hair, her mom's going to be very, very happy about. So those are my announcements.
All right, District Two. Oh, District's not here. District Three.
I don't have any announcements tonight.
District Four.
Oh, mic is already on. I just want to echo Dr. Battle and wishing all of our teachers a Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you for this week and every other week that you dedicate and support our students across the district. So thank you, thank you, thank you. We wouldn't be where we are without you. Also, congratulations to all of our graduating seniors that are...graduations are coming up throughout this month. I think all of us will be attending or officiating a graduation. So congratulations for all of your hard work over the last...
Twelve years?
Thirteen, twelve or thirteen years you've dedicated within MNPS or within schooling in general, and wishing you all the best of luck on your future journeys post-graduation. Also want to thank the Donaldson Hermitage Chamber. They are hosting an Excellence in Education event this Thursday, which will honor all eighteen of the schools within the District Four, my district, Donaldson Hermitage and Old Hickory Community. They will honor each Teacher of the Year, as well as each principal and a Student of the Year within those schools. This is an annual thing that they have done for the last three years, so this is the third year in the making. So we really appreciate the Donaldson Hermitage Chamber for really working to recognize the work within our public school system. And that will be the end of my announcements. Thank you all, everyone.
District Five. District Six.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick announcements. Happy Mother's Day, everybody. And those of us that don't have little ones at home, Happy Mother's Day for all of you fur baby moms. Thank you. I have a grand fur baby, so I have to include that. And thanks, I just want to send a thank you and congratulations and best wishes out to all of the retirees that will be retiring at the end of this current school year. You have done an amazing job, and we are so grateful and thankful for you all and much appreciated. So, yeah, and congratulations in advance to all of our graduates. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. District Eight?
Seven.
I'm seven, yeah.
Yeah, I get to go ahead of Frida this week. Too bad I don't have anything...but so I wanted to announce that next week, and folks may have seen this, but Hillsborough High School on Tuesday, the 16th, at 11:00 a.m. will be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the opening of that school building, which happened, actually, two...we finished the school building previously, but we're just getting now to celebrate. So we will be celebrating that on Tuesday at 11:00, and so please, if you're in the community, feel free to join. And then also just wanted to congratulate all of the students who performed at JT Moore's, The Addams Family, and at West End's, Robin Hood, over this past weekend, weekend. Both excellent productions, and always proud to see our students. There's one other fun Hillsborough announcement, but I'm going to let Elena take that one.
All right, District Nine.
Just want to recognize our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week and our nurses, because of course we have to share, but both are extremely valuable members, and we are extremely happy to have you, and we could not do it without you. So thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for all the time and energy and thoughtfulness that you put into our students and their families every day. You are so appreciated. Thank you both.
All right, our junior board member?
Hi, everybody. Once again, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I really appreciate all the teachers we have at MNPS, and I can confidently say that we are all here because we had an amazing teacher in our lives. So teachers, you guys are very valuable. Also, I have a flex that I go to school with the first-ever MNPS Girls' Flag Football Champions. So, yes, shout-out to the Hillsborough Girls' Flag Football Team, as well as Pearl Cone, I would say Overton, and Hugh Fogg. Those are the top four teams. So that was a really fun experience. And this is like, oh, world record short board meeting, so I hope everyone enjoys their evening and get some rest. This is fun.
No, but we do have one. We'd like to recognize Roshier Deeds Karen Johnson. She'd like to make a special recognition.
I gotta put on these glasses, y'all. Good afternoon, esteemed Board Members, Director of Schools, Dr. Battle, Chair Frida Player, my representatives Cheryl Mays and Frida Player. I am honored to be here this afternoon. I want to also echo everything that has been said and doing a shout-out to all the teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. I know the incredible work that each of our teachers do and administrators, and so I appreciate that. And I appreciate, more importantly, the work that you all do, your leadership in our city. I am here on behalf of over a hundred volunteers that volunteers every year for the Southeast Nashville Egg Hunt and Festival, which is the largest event in Southeast Nashville, Antioch. We were in our 19th year this year, so next year will be the 20th, so maybe we'll give it up. Maybe not, but so many people in the community want to see it keep going, and if it wasn't for your leadership and support, that many children who have a wonderfully blessed day would not be able to have that. And so I am here to present some little gifts to Southeast Nashville Egg Hunting Festival recognizes Cheryl Mays. to Southeast Nashville Egg Hunting Festival recognizes Cheryl Mays, school board member, District Six. And it's for your positive impact on our community and your commitment to the children and families in Southeast Nashville. And so each of these say the same thing. I also have one for school board member Frida Flair. Our Director of Schools, Dr. Adrian Battle. And if y'all are wondering why the little bunny is here, the students at Yuna Elementary School in 2009, they created the logo that has been the logo for the event for all these years. So that's why the bunny is on here. That's the Yuna Students Bunny. And so I want to give these to you all, and I thank you so much for everything you do each and every day.
She was on the Metro Council. I don't think she was ever on the school. Was she?
One, two, three. Sorry. One, two, three. There we go.
Were we supposed to try it on? Were we supposed to try it on? I just took it and put it in the car.
All right, we'd like to thank former school board member Karen Johnson, our current Red Shirt Deeds of Deeds, for your wonderful gifts and recognition. I have no announcements, so be no further business. We are adjourned.